I'd like to call the meeting to order of Thursday, March 18th, 2021. Please silence your phones, and if you'd like to speak on an item, please complete a blue slip and get it to Ms. Jessica. I'll start with invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Hayes.
Good Lord, we thank you as always for the opportunity to get to heaven. Yes, God, be here, directed by you, majestic wisdom. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless southwest Louisiana. Help us to get through these times, give us courage, give us strength. Let us know that you are the ultimate source of all power, and all we have to do is come to you and ask you will deliver. In the precious name of your son, Jesus, we pray and ask these things, Lord.
Amen.
This is back, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Roll call, please, Ms. Kathy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andropov?
Here.
Mr. Bears is stuck in traffic that is on his way. Mr. Barti?
Here.
Vice President Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Hagg?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentail?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Tremonti?
Here.
And President Upshaw?
Here.
You do have a court.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Item four, presentation of a retirement certificate to Mr. Tim Connor for 28 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Calcasieu Parish.
Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very pleased tonight to come before you and join you, the police jury, in recognizing Tim Connor for his exceptional career with the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. These are always bittersweet. We don't do this that often with directors. We have a long history, the police jury does, of continuity, and Tim is a great example of that, and it's a continuity of excellence. And so, with your indulgence, I'd like to take just a few minutes to talk about Tim. I'd like to talk a little bit about his career background and some of his accomplishments, and he'll have a chance to provide those as well, and I'm sure he'd want to hear from some of you. Tim's retiring after almost 29 years of service, and that is a long time. You don't see that as much anymore, but every year has been great here. A little bit of background on Tim. Tim Connor graduated from McNeese State University in 1984 with a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering. After he graduated, for a period of years, he worked locally for Myron Associates. You're all familiar with that firm. And then he went to Florida, Florida Department of Transportation, and he spent some time there, had some good experience. Matter of fact, I think, Tim, if I got it right, did you get your professional engineering designation? A PE in his field is a big deal, and he got it while he was in Florida. But he wanted to come back. This is his home, and we're glad he did. Tim's interest in returning home coincided with the police jury's successful passage by boaters at that time, which was July of 92, in the unincorporated areas of your one and a half cent sales tax for road construction and garbage collection, which has been renewed ever since. It is a very valuable, important tax for this police jury. And so, what happened back as soon as that passed, Claude Smart, who was parish engineer at the time, needed someone to oversee what is a mammoth multi-year project. I would even say multi-decade, if you want to get down to it. It's too hard to cover all that, but it's been a really good run. So, enter Tim Connor. He wants to come back. We happen to need this, and so he started with the parish on October 1st, 1992. He excelled very quickly, and in 1993 was appointed assistant parish engineer by Claude. And I've got to cover a lot of history, and I know we've got a lot of other agenda items, so I'm going to fast forward a little bit. But fast forward to 2011, Claude retired, and I was administrator by then, in 2010, and I appointed him to the position of parish engineer. So, he's been in that role for about 10 years, and he's held that title with distinction since that time. And for those of you who don't know, parish engineer is much more than a title in this state and in any state. They may call them county engineers, but that person is the one who literally and figuratively puts their stamp on every road, every bridge project, says, "This is good to go." And when you think of thousands of people, tens of thousands daily in Calcasieu who travel the 1,100 or so miles of parish road, and one person, Tim Connor, has to be the one that says, "This was good," that's a burden, to be honest, but it's one they hold with honor, but it's a load, if you want to be honest, because we do have accidents, and we want to make sure everybody's safe, but it takes a special person to be that, and Tim is certainly that. Let me cover a few accomplishments, and I've got to hit a few high points. I can't obviously cover all of what he's done, but they are numerous. The one that I'll kind of stick with that time period, as I mentioned, he was the one that oversaw the parish road construction overlay program. To give you a sense of scale, this is going on 30 years now, and every year, every year, somewhere between $30 million and $50 million is spent on public roads and bridges, and it also includes some utilities and other things. The last few years, the budget's actually been close, it's more like $50 million plus, just under engineering, just for capital projects. That doesn't even include maintenance, but that includes overlays of existing roads. And I don't say this with any hesitation, you can go anywhere in this state, and you will not find a better road system, parish road system, in Calcasieu Parish, bar none. Now, Tim will be the first to tell you it's a team effort, and it is, but somebody's got to lead that. I know you're proud of it. For those who weren't here, though, and a lot of you are newer jurors, even during my tenure, back in the mid-'90s, maybe half the parish roads were paved. The other were gravel and dirt, and we had a lot more motor graders than we do now. By the time about year 10 came around of this, which would have been early 2000s, well over 95% of roads in the parish have been paved, and that's under Tim's leadership. So, you can go from Starks, South Lake Charles, Gillis, to Ged, they're paved, with very few exceptions, and I don't think you can say that about any other metro parish in the whole state. Tim's also very visionary. We started realizing that that was the primary goal at the time, were roads and bridges, but we've learned in the last 10 years or so, and usually by, frankly, things we don't think about at the time, a lot of these, we need to be thinking bigger, utilities, water, sewer. And Tim's had a master transportation plan in place for a long time that says, "Let's buy more right-of-way for these two-lane roads in case we need to expand." You can't do that on every subdivision, but for the connector roads, like Ham Reed and Carless and so forth, that's under Tim's leadership. And kind of forgotten, and I'm kind of glad it's forgotten, but I want to mention here is, and I'll look at Chris and others, is the private road conversion project that took place several years ago. Guys, we had a ton of private roads in this parish where people with all good intentions say, "We want to keep it private, me and my family and new neighbors coming in, we'll take care of the road." And in most cases, they just weren't suited. So, they said, "Can y'all take it over, parish?" You take something into a parish system, you better have some criteria, and it was painstaking, and it was long, but Tim set all that criteria, and over the course of a few years, we knocked all of those out. There's a handful left. You don't hear that anymore, though, and that's because of him. There's a lot of projects underway now that have been under Tim that we don't, they're not done yet, but I've kind of mentioned some. I know Guy has been a very big supporter in pushing things like Ham Reed Road Extension, which is not just a road, it is going to be a key connector to state routes and other things because of growth. And Carless, for example, Carless Drive Extension, several phases of that project, and some of these, another one, Johnny Bro Road. Tim is from Vinton, for those of you who don't know that. By the way, before I forget, his lovely wife, Diane, is here tonight, and we are so happy. She's also running for Vinton Town Council, if y'all, so just remember that. I guess I shouldn't say that, but I don't care. But seriously, the Johnny Bro Road Extension is south of Vinton area, and it's an important connector, not just for the citizens, but for economic development. Right now, it's extremely sharp terms and all to come off of I-10 around Highway 108 for trucks, and the port of Vinton down there, it's hard for them to get business. So, the road, sewer, and water from the town of Vinton, all worked out. It's underway. It will bring a lot of good prosperity to the Vinton area, and again, under Tim's watch. And like many good leaders, the fruits of their labor are long after they've left, but let's not forget that. I asked Tim, in all his years here, did he have a favorite project that he oversaw? He didn't hesitate. He said it was the refurbishment of the Lorraine Bridge, and I think most of you know what I'm talking about, but if not, the Lorraine Bridge is a wooden bridge originally built circa 1895, not 19, 1895, to connect Calcasieu and Jeff Davis Parishes down near Bell City Hay, a little connector. Well, over time, of course, it deteriorated. It's on the National Register of Historic Sites, so it's not a well-known bridge for its heavy traffic, but for its beauty, and it's a wooden bridge. But it had to be shut down in 1998 because it wasn't safe, and it was frankly hard to figure out how to rebuild because you don't build wooden bridges anymore, and is it heavy traffic? No, but the citizens of that area, down in the War II area, really pushed hard, advocated, and the police jury approved the money to refurbish it. Tim oversaw that, and it is a beautiful bridge. It has been painted by Elton Louvier and others. It's thousands of pictures taken. It's, Lorraine Park is right there, and that was his favorite, and I didn't know that. That was an interesting story. And so, I would love to go on, but time won't allow it. So, I kind of want to close before I ask Tim to come up, but on a personal level, Tim has been a good colleague and a good friend to me for many years. I have been enlightened by Tim. I am a better person just from being around Tim. If you know Tim, you know he's a man of high character. He is a quiet leader, but being loud doesn't make you a leader. And just ask anybody who works for Tim, and they'll tell you the same thing. I'm going to miss him, and I'm going to miss his strong dedication to public service. He's in that job because he loves serving the public. And he's mentored many employees over the years, and I think if you asked him, he'd perhaps say that was his proudest legacy. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Tim to come on up. When you retire here, we do give you a certificate. I'm not going to read it all. What I want to say, though, as I present this to him, and I'll ask Tim to make some comments, Tim, you're a public servant in the truest sense of the word. We will miss you as you leave this place and begin the next chapter of your life. Congratulations on an outstanding career, and we will miss you greatly. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you, Brian, for those kind words. I'll just try to be very brief here, but I do want to say a few things. This has been really kind of a different week. I've got to go around the parish as we've been working on the reorganization, which you guys are familiar with, and we've met with the crews on the east side and the west side, and I've got to reconnect with some folks that I haven't in quite a while. And so, thinking about all of that, and my retirement here approaching very quickly, it's been a different, and a tough week in a sense emotionally, but I would guess the best way I know how to describe it is that it's been the best and the worst day of my career. And what I mean by that, obviously, is retirement is a great thing, and I'm excited about that and moving forward in that new chapter. But it's been the worst day, as I've shared with some of the staff, in the sense that it's going to be that loss of interaction with jurors, with coworkers, other staff and administration and those guys, and the public as well. So, that's going to be the most difficult part of this retirement, but I want to let you know that my time at the police jury has been among the best years of my working life. In addition to many experiences I've gained along the way, I've gained something far more important. I have found and developed great friendships, many I hope that will last for many years to come. And along with that, I've also gained a feeling of satisfaction and a sense of accomplishment in the work. Most important, of course, is the pleasure and the privilege of being of service to the people and the police jury here in Calcasieu Parish. There are a lot of folks that I need to give thanks to. First, in the prime importance is that I want to be thankful, that you know I'm thankful to God for who I've leaned into daily for wisdom and for guidance that comes with every up and down, the downs of every job. And also, I'm very thankful for my family, especially my wife, who is here. She's been very supportive, encouraging, and understanding, especially during the many years that I've been here and in my absence because of other job duties and responsibilities that have required of me, but I could not have done it without them. And to the police jurors, both present and those who have served in the past, over these past almost 29 years, I want to say thank you for your support. You have always come through. You've provided the resources that I needed and my staff in order to carry out the policies of the police jury. The police jury is led by example during my time here, of what it means to put the public's needs and safety first, and I'm very thankful for that. Brian, thank you for your leadership and your staff for the encouragement and support over these years. Dane, Jessica, Alberta, Sam, you guys, I appreciate all your support. Not very often that I would call administration, but when I did, I always had a listening ear to address my concerns, and that means a lot. So, department directors, including your key staff, and many of these right here to my left, who I've been working with and been in the trenches on more than one occasion, thank you, guys. I've been privileged working with you. You know, I know there are times that sometimes we meet together, and I guess for loss of a better word, we've had some very constructive conversations. We didn't always see exactly eye to eye, but I will tell you one thing, and it's very important. In the end, we all came together because we all had one common goal, and that's how can we best serve the people of Calcasieu Parish and carry out the policies of this police jury. And finally, this is probably the most difficult part, but I want to thank my staff for their loyal support, unwavering desire to make Calcasieu a better place to work and to live. I'm luckier than most people. I've been surrounded by a group of very capable individuals whose passion is to serve, and in my leaving, I can assure you, you're in great hands. In my past almost 29 years, it's been a great journey and a career for which I am very, very thankful. And at that, I'll just turn it back over to you, Brian. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Well, Tim, it's been an honor serving under your leadership as a juror, and I congratulate you.
Thank you.
We have a few jurors that want to make some comments. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can go on for a long time, but I'm not going to do it. But, you know, I'm going to miss you here. You know, you and I have worked closely together on many projects, and I can honestly sit here and say, because one of the projects that we've been working on since 2008, and I can honestly say it wouldn't have gotten done without you. So, well, I'm going to add to that, with me on your back to help you get that done. Because sometimes when I have a passion like you do, and I know the right thing to do is to have the project done, is to just stay focused and get it done and don't let up. And, you know, you're a great friend, aside from the jury here, and I'm just going to miss you. I know John will step in and do a great job, and you just enjoy your retirement. Try to kill as many ducks and catch as many fish and...
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Well, call me, because I'm going to go. And Diane, thank you for, you know, being his sidekick. Just a great guy, great friend, so I'm going to miss you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Mr. Guillory?
Thank you. I just want to say I'm going to miss that smiley face, and I've never seen a time you had a frown on your face, never, and I wish you many, many blessings during this retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim, I'm happy for you, but I'm not happy to see you go. I tell you, it's going to be, it's going to be different, and you've set the bar very high, and I expect Mr. Wayne Wright to be right there with you, so we're going to count on him to fill those shoes. But you've done a great job. You've all, of course, I know, as y'all can tell, he's very even-tempered, not a whole lot bothers him. I don't think I've ever seen him upset, honestly. He might have been, but you wouldn't know it, you know? And just always had a positive attitude, thought out of the box, came up with things, ways to do things that have never been done before, and it's just, you just have done absolutely a fantastic job. I thought about Ms. Trimmie a few minutes ago while I was sitting here waiting on my time to speak, and I know if she was here, now, it would go on a while, we know that. She would have a lot to say, but I know she would use the term "class act." She would use that a lot, and that would be a good description of Tim Connor. He's a class act. The last thing I'm going to say, which, Brian, you surprised me, but I was thinking about your wife, and I forgot how many years ago it was, and we had something going on, I believe, it was an issue in Vinton, and I don't know if it was a police jury meeting or what it was, and she got up and spoke, and she was very passionate about it, and she did a great job speaking. And afterwards, I think I told y'all both, I thought, you know, she ought to run for office. She really should. I thought she would be great, and then she said, "Well, you know, I mean, with Tim's position, now, you know, it just wouldn't be right." She didn't feel right about it. I thought, "Well, that might be a good thing would come out of this, is that, hey, she can run for office now." So, I'm glad to hear that she is, and we wish you well. I know she'll do a great job, but I hope y'all enjoy yourselves, and hopefully we'll see you around. I'm sure we will.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Richard?
Tim, I'm a newcomer, but I went to you a lot in this last year, and I tell you, you left nothing undone. Everything's been done that I've asked for, and we're going to miss you, and we appreciate what you've done for this parish. God bless you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Andropov?
Yes. Thank you. Tim, I think of you, I feel at ease approaching you, your approachability, your, and Mr. Landry touched on that, but your even-kill, your level-headedness, not only as a professional, but as a person, and I've enjoyed working with you, and I wish you nothing but the best. You are truly a class act, as was said. That hit the nail on the head. So, I wish you and your family all the best.
Mr. Bears?
Mr. Connor, you, you know, there's a, I don't even know the saying, if it's not, it's fixing to be. You know, you can always tell how great a leader is by how hard his people work for him, and, you know, they may not, you know, it may not be called "for him," but the way they do their jobs, the way they do their jobs just as hard as he did, just as thorough as he is, and a guy that can get somebody, or a person that can get his staff to work for him, that's huge, and it's a talent, it's a gift, and you have that. We've worked on some stuff. You know, a long time ago, I realized, I think in my second year or so, you know, we were talking about something, and talking about the parish acquiring extra right-of-way, and you mentioned each side of Shoe Peak Drive, and I'm going, "Nothing going on out there." But there will be, you know, and just that far back, you know, the forethought to do things like that, and I realized then that we were in good hands, and the fact that there's huge projects in my district and all over, but, you know, that are coming to fruition, and I just, I know that we're in good hands because of the way you left it. So, thank you for your service. Enjoy your time with your wife, and I don't know, she might be busier than, you know, but anyway, thank you for everything, Tim.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations, Tim. I know 29 years is a long time, and even though I just got here myself, but I'm definitely going to miss you and definitely enjoy your retirement.
Mr. Tremonti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations. I know that I was a pest for my first year. I called you on many things, but you've helped out, you've helped me with everything. Thank you again for that light operator. I get calls all the time for things. I call you, you answer right away, you take care of it, and I'm going to miss you personally. So, thank you, Tim.
Mr. Barti?
Mr. Connor, I don't know you that well, but you know, what I can say, the very first time I met you was, I think we were having the orientation at Burton, and I came up to you with an issue, and, you know, you listened, and you made me feel like I knew something, which I'm, most of these jurors will probably say, "He still doesn't know anything." But I appreciate the way that you carry yourself, your leadership, and the way your department, I mean, you put me in touch with some very good people from your department, and they took great care of the request that I had, and, you know, that speaks volume for the type of person and the leadership that you have shown this area. You know, I've logged quite a few miles the last few months because of the storm and going back and forth from Beaumont, and sometimes I travel some of these backroads, and like Brian talked about, the, our highways and byways back there, and, you know, my tires sing a different song when I go from parish to parish, and it's like, seem like they get a whole lot quieter when I get into Calcasieu Parish, and that's a testament of the job that you guys have done. So, I just want to say congratulations on your retirement, and like I told your wife when y'all were coming in, you know, I thank her for sharing you with us, and Godspeed to you.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Bean?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to do that, looking ahead a little bit.
Okay.
I didn't want to...
Yes, sir?
Thank you. I just appreciate just a little more time because I can, we can kind of just briefly share a little bit about where we go from here. Obviously, parish engineer is a very important role. Before I get to that, Mr. Landry, everybody's got a tell, and you can tell Tim is mad when he curses, because Tim does not curse. Maybe count on one hand when I've heard it, but when I have, he's either real mad or real happy, and so, anyway, for whatever that's worth, you're right, he's very stable tempered. So, with Tim's departure, we've been planning, looking ahead, and like any organization, we're no different, where you want to set it for today's needs and going forward. And for those jurors who've been around since at least Claude was here, you'll remember, we used to actually have engineering and public works under one division, under Claude, Smart. They have been reporting directly to me since then, and we've had reasons, but due to the complexities of drainage, sewage, water, roads, bridges, and other things, it's time to blend the...
it's time to blend those again. And of course, we met with y'all in groups, and you're familiar, but because this is a public meeting, we wanted to go ahead and announce the leadership of that Division of Engineering and Public Works, is what it will be called. And it will be overseen by Alan Wayne Wright, who is currently the Director of Public Works. I'm appointing him, he has the Division of Engineering and Public Works, so his job just got bigger. If you take Public Works, which is about 180 employees, already the largest department we have, add about 35 from Engineering, and as I mentioned, you're talking 50-plus million-dollar capital budgets. It's a big job, and Alan is the man to do it. He has been here since 1997. He's a great manager, he's got good engineering skills, and he will step into that very well in a moment. I will ask him to make some comments. But I also want to fill out his leadership team, and they are very important to him and the rest of us. John Bruce, I think is one of you mentioned, is going to be the new parish engineer. You don't have to wear that hat and be the director over it all, but he will still be over the engineering section of that division. And John is a very talented engineer, a great person, great employee, and he'll slide right in there very well. Teresa Shampo has been in Public Works as well. She is going to be Assistant Director of the Division over the General Office. You have, in modern organizations, and we're big, contracts, budgets, purchasing, administrative support, and she will also take that on from the engineering side as well to add to her Public Works role in that same fashion. And then Terry Freelo, who has been with us many years, a great engineer, he is going to be elevated to the Assistant Director for Public Works. So sort of picture, very generally speaking, the role that Alan and Teresa have been serving. Terry's gonna step into that, and it's a very good role for him. He'll still be over the sewer and water operations as well, we have. Darryl Duhon reports to him, and all the Public Works side, there's no changes there. But of course, in the big overarching leadership group, that fills out those slots. So I've told everybody on the staff this, but Alan and everybody else are gonna need your support going forward. It's a big job, and he's got a lot of good help, but I appreciate you working with him. And I would like Alan to come up for just a moment, if you would, and have some comments. And then, Mr. President, after that, we're done with this item.
Thank you, Brian. And I'll just be very brief. I want to first thank the police jury. I know y'all have had conversations about this. And I certainly can tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to take on this role. I want to thank Tim and Claude. They gave me my first job here back in '97. And more importantly, I tried to figure out what I wanted to say at this time. But early on, I'm not sure if it was Claude and Tim, or Claude or Tim, who made the decision, but early on, they put me into a Public Works track, if you would. They told me then that the Director was Harry Burt. And they said, go sit with Mr. Harry and learn Public Works. And, you know, it won't be too long before he retires, and we're gonna want you to take over that. And really, I don't know who had the wisdom, but I want to thank them for that, because, you know, they let me be who Alan Wayne Wright likes to be. I like to, I really, really enjoy serving the public. And the role as a Public Works Director, we get to help people every day, all the time. So, you know, this isn't an extension of that. We get to participate now more in the engineering side of things and the big projects that, you know, we've kind of deferred to Tim all these years. So I'm certainly looking forward to that part of using my engineering skills to do that. But, you know, really, it's just a night to enjoy, that Tim's career. I look forward to the challenge. I certainly look forward to working with y'all on the projects and picking up on the projects that Tim and John have been working on. And I think we all have the same goal, and that's to take Calchasue Parish to the best place possible to live at. And our job is to get the infrastructure ready to do that. So with that, I just want to say thank you again.
Congratulations to you both. Good luck, Alan. I hope you got a raise. Yeah, new shirts, too. Item number five.
Move on five.
Take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends six renewal applications and one special event permit be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on item six.
Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. Have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 5029 and 5047, Highway 27 South in Ward 4, rezone from agricultural and light commercial to central business commercial to allow commercial development. I need a motion with conditions, I have a motion with conditions from Mr. Guillory and a second from Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 3532, Highway 27 North in Ward 4, rezone from general commercial to central business commercial to allow commercial development. I have a motion with conditions by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 4323, Highway 27 North in Ward 6, rezone from agricultural to light commercial to allow commercial development. I have a motion with conditions by Mr. Markenthal and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 3200 Block of Opelousas Street in Ward 3, rezone from agricultural to central business commercial and light industrial to allow commercial and light industrial development. I have a motion with conditions by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Mr. Guillory.
Yes, after they're finished with the lay-down yard.
Tony, could you?
I'm sorry. After they're finished with the lay-down yard, what's gonna happen then? Do you know, Mr. Smith, or could you tell me?
Yeah, I know, but you can go ahead and...
Wes Crane, Director of Planning and Development. What was the question?
After they finish with the lay-down yard, what are they planning for then? Or is it gonna just stay there for a while on the lay-down yard?
It's being rezoned, central business commercial and light industrial. And they are gonna have lay-down yards in the light industrial area, and they will remain there for as long as, there's no plans to remove them. Okay. Thanks, Mrs. Crane. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 516 Broussard Road in Ward 3, rezone from mixed residential to general commercial to allow commercial development. I have a motion to approve with conditions by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Breen. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 13, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 750 Goodman Road in Ward 3, rezone from single-family residential to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park. I have a motion to deny by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Stelly. Is the applicant here to speak? Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, good evening, President Abshar. My name is Gerard Stoller. I am with FEMA, and I am overseeing the federal recovery effort in Calchasue Parish. I'm assigned to FEMA Region 6. The headquarters is in Denton, Texas. I'm accompanied this evening by Mr. Joe Wallace from the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And he is the site engineer for the site that you're looking at on the screen. What I wanted to just take a couple of moments, a couple of minutes this evening to do is talk to you a little bit about how we got to this point in the recovery from the storms of last summer. There are 2,338 households in Calchasue Parish that have been approved for FEMA temporary housing. What we do after we determine this number is look to put these families into a temporary housing solution in one of three ways. The preferred option is to provide these households with a travel trailer or mobile home on their private site, where their damaged dwelling is, so that they can stay very close to their home while repairs are being made, and they're close to their place of employment and where their children go to school. We've had some degree of success with that in Calchasue Parish. And we're certainly grateful for the parish waiving some ordinances to allow the placement of these units on private sites. But as all of you are well aware, we have significant challenges in this part of Louisiana with regards to flood zones and other limitations that, in many cases, made private sites infeasible. So some of the homeowners need a different option. And I'll talk a little more about that in a moment. Our second approach to providing temporary housing solutions is to put primarily renters, and as we all know, there are a large number of renters in Calchasue Parish. We try to place the renters that are eligible for temporary housing in a existing commercial park. A commercial park that agrees to work and partner with FEMA, where we can use some of their vacant pads or maybe rehabilitate some of their pads in order to place recreational vehicles or mobile homes. Now, you may recall when I last had the opportunity to present to the police jury back in January, we provided a list of commercial parks that we've looked at in Calchasue Parish. And there's more than 100, more than 100 commercial parks in this parish that we have sought to place renters at. We currently have 27 commercial parks under contract, and that has resulted in a significant number of pads. But many of these sites either were unwilling to work with the federal government on this particular mission, or they sustained such severe damage from the storms that they're still in the process of rehabilitating, you know, clearing damaged units, clearing debris, just basically cleaning their site up. So we didn't quite get as much from the commercial parks as we had hoped. The third option for both renters and owners is what we call direct lease. This has been a pleasant surprise for this mission in a positive sense. We've been working very closely with the owner of Mosswood Estates in Sulphur. I'm sure many of you are aware, that's a corporate-type housing establishment. And while they did sustain some minor damage from last summer storms, they have been working very hard to rehabilitate those units. And we are expecting to place up to 300 families at Mosswood Estates. We currently have just under 130, but we have several more households that are awaiting a unit at Mosswood Estates. So the bottom line for these three options is that we have been able to identify, and this number fluctuates, but in general terms, we've been able to identify 2,012 spots to place these households that have been, that were displaced from the storms last summer. So if you take that smaller number, 2,012, and subtract it from the eligible households, 2,338, you get 326, which is the shortfall we have right now of locations to place displaced households in Calchasue Parish. And that is why we're here this evening to talk about this particular site, which we call a group site. This is gonna be a mobile home, a temporary mobile home park that we, in coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers, will construct for these 326 families. Now, I want to make it clear that this site at this location is not the only site we're looking at. We are currently in negotiations with the owner of a site where we're referring to as Frugee, which is on Highway 90. We received a zoning exception for this location last month. That site is expected to yield up to 200 mobile home units. This site, if the rezoning is approved, could yield as many as 211 mobile home pads. So that would give us over 400 pads, enough of a cushion for us to meet what we expect to be the temporary housing mission here in Calchasue Parish. Now, as I was making my remarks, I noticed that you received a handout. It consists of three pages. The top page, you can see the basic timeline that we're looking at, pending the outcome of the meeting here this evening, right through, you know, Phase 1, which is where we're at right now, right through Phase 5, which is restoration. Now, I should point out that that restoration timeline is subject to a possible extension of the housing mission. A FEMA's direct housing mission, and I believe we discussed this in January, is for 18 months in duration from the date of the declaration. So right now, we're looking at an end date of 1 March. However, it's very common for the state to find it necessary to request an extension for this. So it is possible that if approved, and we do construct this site at Pinewood, at Pine Shadows, that the program could go longer than what you see on the end date there. But the idea is just, the whole point here is just to kind of give you an idea of what the different phases are in developing the site. The second page is just a layout. And just by way of orientation, you can see North Goodman Road runs along the very bottom of the picture, but you can kind of get a general idea of how we propose to lay out these mobile homes. Which, by the way, these mobile homes will be various bedroom configurations, roughly the same size, but anywhere from one to three bedrooms, depending on the need. And the third page is a map, which I thought was important to include here. You can see by the darker green shaded areas on the map, which is kind of laid out by zip code.
Got one minute.
This is intended to project or illustrate the density of households that are waiting for a temporary housing solution. Again, our purpose in implementing this program is to try to get these households as close as possible to where they live. And I think you can see by this chart that a large portion of those households awaiting temporary housing are within very close distance to not only Pine Shadows, but also the Frugee Land. Land site. Again, both those are illustrated by the purple triangles on the map. There are some other triangles on there. These are some other sites that we are looking at.
Time to wrap it up, Mr. Stoller.
Yeah. We're looking at some other locations, but there are some potential shortfalls there, we feel, in talking very closely with the planning division here in the parish, that the Frugee and Pine Shadows sites give us the best opportunity for success. Again, I want to thank the parish leadership for their partnership in this process, and we certainly look forward to continuing to work with the parish in the future regardless of the outcome this evening. Again, if there are any questions, we'll certainly be willing to take those.
Mr. Landry, do you have a question for Mr. Stoller? Or would you like to wait until we have some other speakers?
Well, he's there. I might as well just go ahead and get it over with right now. No sense in him walking back up there again. I'm going to tell you my problem that I've got with this. This same piece of property evidently has been more than a year ago, or it wouldn't be before us tonight, came up for basically the same thing, or a mobile home park. It failed. It did not pass. I'm sure y'all have been told that. There are people that live out there that really just, they don't want that in their neighborhood. My biggest issue is we have a park there, the Crying Eagle, that was used after Hurricane Rita. Probably millions of dollars spent on that infrastructure. It served its purpose. Many, many hundreds of mobile homes were out there. And over, I don't know, four or five years, it finally, it phased out and all the folks moved out. And I remember that coming before us. There was talk about, should we remove all of that? And well, no, let's leave that infrastructure in case we ever need it again. Well, here we are. We need it again, evidently, from what you're telling me. I'm not doubting your numbers. Why in the world are we not using that site?
And the name of that site again, sir? Is it?
Crying Eagle.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's on Highway 397. You might not have been here during Hurricane Rita, but that was used by FEMA for exactly what you're wanting to do here. And the site's still there with all the infrastructure.
So as a matter of fact, I'm very familiar with that. I wasn't on here in Rita, but I've talked to my colleagues who were. In fact, we discussed this with the parish. This is, Crying Eagle is one of the 60 sites that we've looked at as potential group sites for this mission. The port of Lake Charles is, when we discussed that with them, they have already leased that land to the parish sheriff's office. It was not, it's not available. In addition to that, we've been also made aware that there's some wetland issues with further development of that location. That was a site that we were very interested in early on for the very reason that you brought up, but that is...
So you're telling me the port leased it to the sheriff? Do you know what they're doing with it?
I'm not exactly sure what the sheriff is...
I don't know why the sheriff, I mean, the sheriff should be very much aware of the housing shortage. I don't know why they, I mean, I would think, have y'all spoke to him? He would be willing to probably let y'all use it, I would imagine.
No.
I mean, it's just sitting there.
Yes, sir. That was one of the first sites that we wanted to go back at, but it was, it's...
So has your organization contacted the Calcasieu Parish Sheriff's Department and asked them to...
Well, we talked to the port that owns the site, and that's what we were told.
But you've got to understand where I'm coming from.
Sir.
I'm here to represent the people of this parish and these homeowners and folks that may not, may or may not want this in their neighborhood. And it's hard for me to start rezoning property when I know that there's existing property out there that we haven't filled up yet.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's a problem.
Sir.
And, you know, I know you talked to the port. They've told you they've leased it to the sheriff. Well, then speak to the sheriff. Maybe he'll sublease it to y'all. I mean, it's worth a try, I think, if this doesn't work out. I mean, I don't, I know how I feel about it. I'm just speaking for myself.
Yes, sir.
Now, all these gentlemen up here have their own mind and their own way of thinking, so maybe I'm just out on a limb. I'm not sure. But thank you for answering my questions. Just moving my phone.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Stelly.
Chris, the property that you're talking about, is there's trailer houses there that were set up for his employees?
Okay. Well, I was, I'm completely unaware of that. I hadn't been by there in some time, if I may, Mr. President.
Brian, can you explain to me, and also before you speak, Brian, the infrastructure from Crying Eagle was removed from there. There's no longer infrastructure there.
I thought we left that infrastructure there on purpose.
No.
Who removed it?
The infrastructure that's there now was put, there is new infrastructure that was put for temporary housing for deputies, is what currently is there.
Well, I would appreciate if the staff could try to find out how, when and when all that infrastructure got removed, because that is not at all what I thought happened years ago whenever we shut that park down.
And Brian, if I could speak...
Yes, sir.
There's only, what, is there 30 units out there? So it takes, it's only a small portion of that property that's being used for that currently. Now, as you know, the airport owns all the way to East Prairie Lake Road, but then you have conflict with the runways right there, you know, the further south you go. But the infrastructure, as I remember, even the limestone was removed from that property. There's no longer infrastructure there.
So y'all will check on that and get back with me, so we can, or really not with just me, just so everyone will have the answer if all that, the plumbing and the sewage lines and all that stuff is still there or not. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Stoller? Mr. Hayes?
Could you explain to me what an intersection analysis is?
I'm sorry, sir? Repeat that.
Could you explain to me what an intersection analysis is?
What I know about a, it's called a TIA, traffic intersection analysis, is going to be done by the Louisiana Department of Transportation, and the purpose is to assess the impact of an additional development like this.
Is it usual to ask for our approval prior to this being released to us, this information shared with us? I'm talking about the intersection analysis.
And it's my understanding that that, that traffic analysis is ongoing right now. I don't know what the, when the results will be available, but I know it's...
I believe Mr. Crane might be able to answer that question for you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, typically, when someone or developers requesting a rezoning of property, that is normally a condition that we place on the applicant to perform that prior to the issuance of a permit. And so, in other words, the land use side of this is the first step, is to determine whether, you know, the land use, is this the appropriate land use type for this property? And then, secondly, is the development, you know, the traffic, the drainage, any of that will come after the land use is approved. And so that's when they have to perform that prior to any permitting of that particular site. So it normally comes after that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Crane. The concern that I have is, I know there's going to be a traffic impact out there if this is adopted by us.
Yes, sir.
I used to go play golf at Pine Shadows all the time, and I saw what it was like before any of this was up for discussion. And if you're going to bring in between, and I'll just shoot a number, 200 to 400 families out there, you better be doing something with the highways and the traffic and the, I mean, it's going to be chaos, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any other questions before we hear from the residents? Mr. Tremonti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's my understanding that FEMA would go in and install all the infrastructure, roads, sewage, everything. Will you be taking that out whenever this is over, whenever the need's not there? Will all that come out? And I'll wait for your answer.
Yes, at the end of the, whenever the program ends, our responsibility is to return that site to its, as close as possible to its current condition, if that's what the... Now, if the owner would want to have some of that infrastructure remain in place, and he would have to come back to the parish to request permission to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Barris?
Who is the landlord? When you open this up and this is not your traditional neighborhood?
Right.
So, you know, I don't know, who kind of watches it? Who kind of, how does that...
Yeah, we will have a site manager. It's just like a commercial park would have a manager that would be on-site 24/7. We will have a maintenance contract in place if there are any issues there. We will coordinate with the local authorities for security and things of that nature.
Mr. Barris? Mr. Smith?
Okay. Now, I know we was talking about Crying Eagle earlier, and I remember when they had Crying Eagle, they did have an actual security guard there, gate there, a person had to come in. Whoever came on the premises had to show ID to make sure they actually stayed there. And I looked through the actual plans, and none of that was actually there. So are y'all relying on just the local police to monitor the area? Or would it be a private security for actually the gate like it was before?
Want to make sure I understand your question about security?
Yes, security. Yes, sir.
And we will not, again, there will not be FEMA security on this site. It's going to be, we will coordinate that with the local law enforcement.
Okay. So we're just talking about an actual added patrol area with the sheriff, the actual sheriff department, not an actual, like, a security team itself or company?
No.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a strictly, you know, gated type community. It's going to be like a regular commercial, set up just like a regular commercial park. It'll have a perimeter fence around it, but not, will not have controlled access.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say, Mr. Smith, is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
There is.
So it's a motion to deny, correct, by Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
And a second by Mr. Stelly.
If your motion was to fail, then we'll vote again, which will be to approve. But before we did that, you could add an amendment that would require them to have on-site security 24/7 and it operate just as you described.
Okay.
Which would, if we get to that point...
Right.
Your motion would have to fail, but if it did, you could certainly add that.
Okay.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from our first speaker, Mr. Lonnie Thomas.
Mr. President, as Mr. Thomas comes up, how many speakers do we have in opposition?
Two. Just two.
Two, three minutes each?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. He withdrew. He left.
Mr. Thomas, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lonnie Thomas. Address is 4220 Opelousas Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70615.
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I guess I'll start off by saying a lot of the things that they were saying about these homes they wanted to put there sound kind of sketchy, that the fact that they're going to be temporary homes, first of all, and these temporary homes could turn into a long-term thing. The infrastructure itself, whether or not it's going to be temporary for a while, the infrastructure's going to stay there unless the owner decides he wants to get an extension and continue this here. The problem's going to be with all the traffic that's coming in. You're talking about 200-plus homes there. You could figure it out, each vehicle, each home's having about at least maybe two to three vehicles per homes there. So that's going to impact the traffic there. They showed you diagrams of the Goodman Road there, which is on the side, which is on the north side of the overpass. They're not showing you the side that there, it's going to impact, which is on the south side at the intersection. That's where the impact's going to be. Emergency happen, you can't get emergency vehicles in there, or you won't be able to get anything out of there. I live on the corner of the intersection. I see many wrecks, many accidents. You got a lot of speeders, a lot of people running stop signs. Everybody's not going to obey the driving speed and, you know, drive correctly. And we're talking about moving more people back there, which the narrow roads can't support all that. Also, bringing these trailers there with the big trucks and stuff to bring the trailers, plus the equipment that goes along with the trailers, is just tearing up the roads right now. They have to make wide turns. They turn into the edge of the ditch. The ditches are caving in. Sometimes, depending on the direction they're coming from, they turn in part of my grounds, my front yard. And a lot of the wrecks that happens, there are a few of them that's ended up in my front yard. I'm afraid to let my grandchild go out there in the front yard because we never know when.
You have one minute, sir.
But this is not a good situation. Again, they tried to put trailers there before. It was denied, and these are some of the same reasons why it should not go there again. If there are other properties that they're looking at, pursue those. Right now, the community that lives back there, we don't need this back there. They're not going to make, we can't even get a street light put up there for nighttime, let's long getting some infrastructure work done at the intersections to improve, so it won't be impacted so bad. This traffic study has been done. I thought they probably started it too late because they should have had some answers by tonight. So we would know something. This is just going to create a bigger problem. And once you get the okay, you won't be able to stop it, and these trailers are going to continue going on and on and on. I think this is more than just about trying to give people home. This is more about putting a dollar in the pocket.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Thomas, I just wanted to show the picture. Mr. Thomas, could you put the intersection up there for the jurors to see that?
Can we hear from both of our speakers first?
Okay.
Okay.
I mentioned, and that's why I said it.
Mrs. Holmes? Mrs. Linda Holmes? Your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Linda Holmes. I live at 4447 Presley Park Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70615. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies of this great board. I come to appeal to you to deny this request. I live right across from where they want to put the trailers. We have been before you at least twice concerning this. First, concerning trailers like this, and second, because of houses. And we was in favor of that. We need something permanent there, not temporarily. We are on a one-way street, one way in, one way out, and then we got a dead end, which is the river. So to bring all this in and the traffic like it is, there's no way we're going to even get out our own subdivision. It's like really putting a house on sinking sand. They say it's not in a flood area. Everything that nobody has written back there to see. We flooding already, and since the storms and the freeze, it's more because they've taken away the greenery, the trees, to help keep the water in. And I purposely drove by there today because I know I was coming here. And that place is even worse, but it floods anyway, and I don't care what they say on paper. You could stand on that bridge and you could see the Gulf Coast underwater on this end. Now, about the other end, I don't know. But to bring all this extra stuff in, it's going to make it even lower. It's going to run over into our subdivision, 700-plus homes, families. The creatures going to come. We already have raccoons going in the trash can every night just to get their supper, you know? So here come the possums, the raccoons, and whatever else, because when you clear that off, they coming over the street to us. And this street is no further than this. And we have young children. We don't even have animals. We have animal re... And we have young children, we don't even have animals, we have animal restrictions on our property. So here, we fitting to get everything from there for a temporary situation, when we could look for something better. And he just told us we have other places. I really have a problem. He needs to consider these other places. And I've been there...
One minute.
Eleven years? I've been asking for a light for five. I've been to the Three Pullers Year, trying to get a light. And I don't mean a red light, I mean a light just to be able to turn the corner where these trucks going to go in the ditch. And that's on both sides. So please do not let this pass, and if, and if so, we need to look at something permanent. I'm sorry. We, you, you will prob, I will probably come to you again if it's something permanent to be over there. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gillory?
I just wanted the jurors to see the intersection that, to go into place, and the one-way in and one-way out that they're talking about, it's not wide on either side, and it's just one-way in, that's the road to the north end you can see going over the bridge.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion on the floor to deny the request by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Stelly. Mr. Gab, is this a roll call vote?
It will be.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? Thank you. Oh, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, just say what Mr. Thomas and Ms. Holmes said are definitely true. Like I say, they have fought for a lot for the intersection, and the people back there just don't want it right now. We do know people need a place to stay, but the only thing is, we need to fix the intersection and the infrastructure first before putting 200-some homes back there, whatever, and 500 cars coming there daily. That's an actual additional 500 car, because they already have cars coming over there now. So I just want to stick with my motion to deny. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tremonti?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. Now, I pulled it up, because I'm not very familiar with it. I pulled it up to look on Google Earth, and that's a big neighborhood right next to it. I don't know how many homes are in that, but that's quite a bit. And I agree with Mr. Smith, although these are our people, these are our people from Calcasieu Parish that need a place to stay. I, I don't know how much more traffic that could take with that size neighborhood right there with just that one, that one street coming in and out. I just wanted them to know that we want, we want them to find a place to stay here and quickly, but I don't know that that's the place to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Kathy?
I was going to say, good for the new jurors, so they would know what a yes vote mean and a no vote mean, probably for myself.
The motion is to deny the rezoning request, so a yes would be to deny.
Thank you, ma'am.
You will start with the ayes. Mr. Andropont?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Mr. Barti?
Yeah, we're voting on the motion.
The motion to deny.
Yes.
So yes would be to deny. Vice President Breen?
Yes.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Gillory?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Markantel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Tremonti?
Yes.
The vote was unanimous, the rezoning request was denied.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Item?
Yes.
Sir.
Before we move on, Mr. President, I want to make a suggestion. There's going to be more of these, and I would ask that the staff, or actually, you can do it, you're the president of this police jury, let's come up with a little, some ad hoc committee made up of two or three jurors, whoever you pick, because, believe me, we have a feel for what, where these things should be and where they should not be, and we also have a feel of what might pass and what might not pass. I could have told you this wasn't going to pass six months ago.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, we beat that horse to death out here in this same piece of property right now. So, time is of the essence, and I understand these folks want a place to live, and I think we ought to be here to try to help them. That can't hurt anything. Not that two or three of us are going to be right all the time, but we kind of got an ideal, I think, more so, and look, Mr. Crane's doing a great job. He does what he's supposed to do. He's looking at it black and white, and he's looking at land use only. But we know the people, and we talking to the people, and we know what they want. Just to me, if, if that was part of that process, maybe we wouldn't continue to go through this, because, believe me, this is only the beginning. This is going to go on for months.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Item 14, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 5700 Block of Lake Street and Ward 3. Amend ordinance number 4908 to allow parking to be located in front of the commercial buildings. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? I'm sorry, Mr. Landry, again, sir, please, can we hear your voice?
So what is, what is the surface going to, if it's not concrete, does that mean, and I understood, I talked to Mr. Crane before, they're, they're wanting to put some in front, it's all supposed to be in the back, he wants to do some in the front and the side, not all, but is he also doing away with the concrete?
No, sir.
So it's still going to be concrete?
It's going to be hard, it's going to be hard surface. He just wants to be able to locate some of the parking in the front.
But it's going to be well landscaped?
Yes, sir, he's got about a 20-foot landscape area that he's going to land.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 15, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application.
Move to defer for up to 90 days.
Second. Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Andropont to defer for 30 days.
Not 90.
Mr. Crane?
90 days.
90 days.
Up to nine. Up to 90 days.
Mr. Crane?
I might need Mr. Gab's opinion on this, but the Planning and Zoning Board, they had deferred action on this on Tuesday night, 30 days, so I'm not sure if the police jury acts on this, is that?
So what, well, the motion to defer is fine. That will solve our problem. Police jury can't take up this item until they get a recommendation in favor or against from the Planning and Zoning Board. So the Planning and Zoning Board hasn't done that yet, so we can't even take action on it yet. The Planning and Zoning Board only deferred it to their next meeting, so if they do take action, it will, it will be placed on the agenda, the next agenda for the police jury. At that point, again, the motion to defer could be made, or you can take it up. But it's on the Planning and Zoning Board agenda first, and they'll take action, and if they do make a recommendation, then it comes to this, this body, and then this body can take action after that.
And, Mr. Gab, they could defer it again if they, if they...
Yes, so what will happen here, once it gets deferred here tonight, the Planning and Zoning Board will take it up at their meeting next month, and then if they make a recommendation at that point, then it'll be up to the police jury to decide what to do next.
No, no.
Mr. Burley?
The reason I'm asking for this affirmative, because I need to meet with the citizens in that area, we're going to have a public meeting we're setting up now, and hopefully it wouldn't take 90 days. I don't want to delay this any longer, but I just don't want to keep coming back and back and back. We put this item on hold because of the storms, and now we're back here, and now I'm asking for it to be deferred again. I don't want to continue to do that. I understand if they act on it in 30 days, we'd have to come back and do it again, but that's why I'm asking for up to 90 days. I'm not anticipating it taking 90 days, but I don't want to have to come back again. But if we have to because of that, we can do that.
Well, it, it may or may not come back. If the Planning and Zoning Board defers it again, then that takes it off your table anyway. But it, it will be put on the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Board next month.
And I would say this, Mr. Burley, is that if, if you haven't held your meeting before the next Planning and Zoning Board?
I'll request it.
We would, on your behalf, we would ask that it be deferred again.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barris?
Can we make sure that this doesn't happen again? If this is the case, when something's deferred by the, by the Planning and Zoning Board, no action needed tonight, something big, maybe red. That way, we don't, we don't confuse things, we don't, we don't confuse folks.
Just to keep the record straight, you have to have a, have to defer it, that's all that has to be done.
We don't have to defer anything, it's not even to us.
Well...
Correct, am I right? That's what you just said.
It's, it's put on the agenda, so you have to have something done with it, so it really is just a quick defer. That's all it is.
Okay. Mr. Tremonti?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were waving. All right. So we have a motion to defer. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 16, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following road abandonment application. 1232 Gant Road in Ward 4, abandon and revoke the original road and right-of-way dedication of a portion of Gant Road. I have a motion to approve with conditions by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 17, consideration of adopting a resolution supporting the Mud Lake South Marsh Creation and East Cove Marsh Creation for Phase 1 funding from the Coastal Wetland Planning, Protection and Restoration Task Force.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 18...
Move on 18, all bullets.
...adoption a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the local metropolitan planning organization, which allows the following projects to be eligible for state and federal funds. Louisiana 1256 at West Cal Boulevard, intersection improvements, and adaptive traffic system signals on Nelson Road. I have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 19, consideration of adopting an ordinance canceling a 40 mile an hour speed limit and establishing a 35 mile an hour speed limit on Grape Street in Ward 6. I have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 20, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a separate first-dollar worker's compensation policy for employees scheduled to work under the COVID-19 Disaster Recovery Dislocated Worker Grant. I have a motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 21, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the submission of a proposal by the Human Services Department for one-stop operator for the American Job Center. I have a motion by Mr. Gillory and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Take appropriate action on the following bids, quotes, and/or proposals received by the parish purchasing agent. Item A, February 25, 2021, bids for herbicides and weed control chemicals. The staff recommends a respective low responsible and responsive bid of Rintokil North America Inc., DBA Target Specialty Products also be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? I'm sorry? Mr. Barris?
I need to let the record show that I am recusing myself from this item.
Thank you, sir.